Everyone.
Sorry.
Thank everyone for coming out. Budanji, it's nice to see you. We have, I see everyone here except for Christine.
She's here. Just got on.
Okay. Oh, listen, look at that. And Maxine. I don't see Maxine.
Not yet.
All right, so, old business, want to entertain a motion to approve the May 19 minutes?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, before we go into the new business, I just wanted to report on a couple of things. Since our last meeting of the committee, Mark and I, along with folks from TSKP, presented to the council on May 24th. Mark and I presented to the beautification committee on the 26th of May. On June 3rd, we were in front of the design review board. As many of you know, both Mark and Michelle are members of the design review board. In the morning, Mark and I joined the Bloomfield Public Library all-staff meeting to give the staff an update on where we are in the project. We discussed the timeline, design, and next steps, and there was a Q&amp;A period. So that was, I thought it went really well. And to the extent that I could summarize from the council presentation, I think some of you were on that call, but I just wanted to share a couple of the comments. And I know Richard took copious notes from that. But there were a number of members who made reference, at least I had four down, wants to see more brick in the Prosser Building. They wanted to see a tie-in with the Philly Pond. One person on the council was not happy about knocking down Prosser. Councilperson Wong said she loved the design and she complimented the group on the equity perspective that we have been working under. And we were requested to meet with the finance committee of the council, which will take place on June 21st. The beautification committee had thoughts about, they want to see an irrigation system. Thought that landscaping, which we all know is critical to both locations. We got a heads up about the annualized soft costs for both buildings, particularly with security and fire systems. Apparently, there were a couple of soft costs that were a surprise to some with respect to the 330 Park Building. They liked the nexus from the brook to the building at Prosser. They requested for some brick to blend with the town center. And they wanted us to find a way to make use of the town green visually from the, I guess, looking east out of the Prosser Building. Overall, both the council and the beautification committee are very supportive. And the design review board, I'll try and fill in a few things, and I'll leave it to Mark and Michelle to add. But there was one member who wanted to make sure that the Riley lumber pathway to the Prosser Bridge becomes a statement of the building. They thought that we could really enhance and make it quite attractive and pleasing to the eye. They wanted to see the front of the building be more inviting to the public and the community. One person commented that he liked the glass looking for the town green at night. They desired for more consistency with the building as it relates to the surrounding buildings. One of the members wanted to know more about the process for the state grant that we will be applying for. The entrances and the visualization, wanted those to be clear. But again, I thought that the design review board was very supportive. But again, there were a couple of items that they wanted to see, and we will be back in front of them at a later date. And I just tried to quickly summarize from my notes. But I will ask Michelle and Mark to maybe include more about the design review board meeting if they like.
Actually, I, I don't have anything else to add. I just want to say that when minutes of that meeting are available, they should be shared with this committee.
Michelle?
I would agree with the last part of Mark's statement. I believe that all the reviewing bodies that you presented to, that their minutes of that interview should be incorporated as part of this evening's minutes whenever you get them, because they should be part of the official record. I would say that from the standpoint of the design review board, I would not say that it was generally held in approval. The library concept for a new library was heartily supported. However, I think that the prevailing concern was compatibility issues, both from the standpoint of what exists in town center now and how the proposed concept will collaborate with what exists. And also, there was concern about access and building materials in general. But there were a lot of positive comments as well. I think that incorporating the minutes will go a long way toward giving everyone a more complete view of the comments and the responses.
Yeah. Thank you all. And we will try to get those minutes to the, to the group. And again, I was just taking a moment from the quick notes that I took from each of those meetings to update the board at this, the committee at this time. And again, we will share the minutes when available. I'm going to turn it over to Richard, Tai Su Kim, to update the committee on the next renditions of the design.
All right, guys. Took me another second there to get my act together. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to everyone. So tonight, I'm going to share with you some progress on the Prosser exterior view and as well as the McMahon exterior views. You may recall that we have engaged the services of a professional renderer who uses computer technology. There have been several iterations that have gone back and forth. And renderer is located overseas. We've worked with him before, but it's been a bit frustrating recently. So I'm going to share with you those renderings tonight. And you know that we have a forthcoming town council meeting, which we will really present an even finer version of these renderings. And what I would like to do, as soon as the renderings are finalized, and I think that will be by Friday, is to send to members of this committee that version that will then go to the town council on Monday. So again, from the vantage point of standing on that green area adjacent to Town Hall, looking at the existing Prosser site, what we've done is worked with the renderer to create this more accurate version. This is based upon actual topography and actual geography around the site. You can see now that we are indicating some color in the red area. I'm not sure what that material is just yet. And that's something that is going to be discussed with this committee certainly, but also with the design review board at the appropriate time. I do want to add to the comments from, from you and Michelle and Mark. It was a very, very productive meeting. We got a lot of comments. Yes, I did take a lot of copious notes. Overall, I think the design review board appreciated the fact that you're coming in at this stage to have them give us their opinion, their observations. And I came away with a couple of things. One, more attention needs to be placed on the landscaping, how the building meets the ground, the improvements around the grounds. And secondly, the impact of the roundabouts in this area. It's, we know that the roundabouts are a realistic possibility, but the timing of it is not that clear. So one member of the review board very astutely pointed out that there will be some period of time in which the roundabouts are not there, and then they're there. And then, are we taking into account any changes in the sidewalks as a consequence? And I said, yes, we have taken that into account. The site plan, as we prepared it, with the placement of the building could work in either scenario, I'm sure of that. But what is not clear is the sidewalk improvements, or I should say, any sidewalk improvements that we do as part of the Prosser Library project may get affected by the cul-de-sac. And the difference between the sidewalks between now and when the cul-de-sacs occur does need to be addressed, perhaps by the time the engineer, the appropriate time.
You don't mean cul-de-sacs, you mean roundabouts?
I meant roundabouts. Yes, thank you very much, Bob. I meant roundabouts. So that's what I want to show you tonight. We have, we will have two final versions of this viewpoint. One is a daytime view. As you can see here, this was rendered for a daytime period of time. And then there will be a nighttime view as well, so that you will see both. Get both versions of that to members of this committee just prior to the town council. And then a reminder of the McMahon Building, the exterior of the existing building as it looks from Bluegills Avenue. You saw this rendering previously. This is the view from the southeast corner. And you may recall that we had proposed a different kind of exterior material on the addition. The existing building is located to the left behind the addition here, and the new addition in front of the building. And there was comments that we received at that time. Well, what about brick? Wouldn't brick be more compatible with this building as it currently exists? Another comment was the amount of glass that we have on the exposure here. Isn't that a problem? Well, so we've tried to address both in this revised version. You can see that the building could be done with an addition of brick so that it ties in to the material that already exists on the existing building. And I know it's difficult to perceive, but we're proposing some treatment of the glass, as you can see here, to cut down on the heat gain. And this technique is called fridged glass. It has thermal as well as reflective characteristic. So just back and forth very quickly. Previous version. The updated. The other viewpoint is from the northeast corner of the existing building. Again, this was the previous version of the addition. This is the new and improved version, which is in brick. Similar concept of the fridged glass, it's the same elevation. So once again, before. So that's the evolution of the changes that we've taken on the exterior of both McMahon and Prosser. I'd be happy to ask any questions. The only other slide I have here has to do with milestones to schedule.
Any questions for Richard or comments?
Lois has her hand up, and the mayor has her hand up.
Lois?
I wonder if you could go back to the Prosser again and identify for me the things that you have done that show that you have heard people's concerns about blending it more with the center as it is now.
Well, we are introducing some brick, some color, or some material to blend in with the, with the brick comments that we heard. So I said that this material hasn't been finalized, the red here. But that is certainly something that could tie it into the material that people have pointed out. And also, it has those features that we talked about last time. Remember, we did three different sketch versions that Tai Su presented, and the arched windows, both here in the third-story area up high, and the arched windows here, to try to create a more classical feature, which is arched windows. You see arched windows in buildings such as this church, and also the vertical components, like the vertical components of the church. And of course, the whiteness of the church, that exterior white material and the white material of the Prosser.
That's pretty much the thinking from the beginning without much modification. It sounds to me as if the modification is a little bit more color on the side that faces Park Avenue, but in other fairly minor changes. Am I correct about that?
Yes, that is correct.
I guess one, one comment I have is, is we have a town center, which is, we're focusing on municipal buildings, and somehow we have focused instead on the one religious building. So, you know, I think that's an important distinction to make. But I appreciate the presentation, and I particularly like what you've done with McMahon.
Thank you. Budanji?
Thank you. Really, I feel like no additional thought has been added to what has been told to you thus far, either from members of this committee, community members that have joined these committee calls, especially since the release of these designs, as well as what some members on Town Council mentioned. I think what you've done is, is what Lois has said, you've modified it. I don't think any real effort has gone into incorporating some of the changes in which we've indicated that the community is looking for. I mean, at that town council meeting, because I was on that call, someone, and don't make me lie as to who that is, indicated that the building is beautiful. It kind of sounded like what I'd said. It's a beautiful building. It just doesn't belong in our center of town. And I feel as though some of the feedback that you got at the beautification committee, which was really questioning that entrance being on that side facing mountain versus being at the front where it is currently, I don't see where that's been incorporated. So I do have concerns that we're going to be put in a position that we don't know what we'll get, we'll pay a whole bunch of money for it, and most likely still won't be satisfied. We may be satisfied, but we may not be satisfied. And that's a big concern with this dollar amount that we're expected to pay. So I want to know, with the rendition coming from your offshore vendor, I want to know, have you really taken the feedback to heart to really look at your design? I mean, at one of these meetings, I want to say it was Mr. Caperson that mentioned, or maybe it was a town council meeting, where it mentioned the space that you're losing from having these elevated ceilings and the open space. I realized, Richard, that you weren't on that call, that it was Wett representing the firm at that time. But I want to know how that's being remedied too. So not just the external, but the internal, in terms of the overall feedback. I mean, a part of the discussion, and I don't, I didn't hear this mentioned by anyone thus far, was a covering over that walkway in the back. Like, how do you remedy when the weather is bad? You know, having some protections from the elements coming from that lower parking lot. I don't see where that's been incorporated. So at this point, I'm still a bit concerned, because I feel like, to a degree, what people are saying, or somewhat falling on deaf ears to, okay, we'll, we'll make these modifications to appease you, but we really won't make any real change that you're looking for, although we recognize and acknowledge what it is you're asking for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to say I'm very happy with the new rendition for McMahon-Winstonbury. I thank the architects for taking the suggestions of the community in mind. The Prosser Library, I am still a little concerned with. And I'm just going to leave that there. But I'm very happy that they did not incorporate some of the changes for the McMahon-Winstonbury. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments or questions? I don't see any hands. Oh, there is one.
Elizabeth has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Yes, I wanted to say that I realize that I represent different circles than some of the political circles that have been represented so far in terms of comments. And I feel that I represent staff and the people coming into our buildings. And we've heard a lot of positive feedback about both locations from current users of the library.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Richard, does that conclude your report or presentation?
It does, Mr. Chair.
Great. I'm going to turn it over to Dave Patrick from Downs to discuss the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hang on one second. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, in essence, the budget that we had before. Prosser Library at $27,817 square feet, McMahon Library at $8,918 square feet, which I think, you know, basically, it represents what Richard is presenting tonight, this budget. We've made a couple of refinements. We had in, in our last budget, the, if you look at the, at the lower portion here, the prefab bridge labor and the site concrete material labor, we actually had that included in the line items up above. And I thought it made sense to split those costs out. And so, previous to this, we, we did not add those lines into our budget because the cost was up in the concrete line item and in the site line item. But we have since made those, made those changes. And so, if anybody is inclined to total the numbers up, we've made those alterations. It has not made any change to the budget. The budget is still the same. The other thing that we did get was a, a budget on the solar for the McMahon Library, which came in at about $91,000. I think it's important to note that in both of these cases, I am assuming that, assuming that the budget supports it, that you would want to go with a lease-to-own option. I think that's the best investment for the town. But if we, if we get into the project and think that that's not the best for the town, we certainly can, we can finance it over time. So with that addition of $91,000 in solar on the McMahon Library, it brings the total of the combined two to $28,879,000. And, and other than that, we have not made any changes to the budget. We did clarify that if the, if the library grant is, is sought and approved, that that would be public money and that this project would have to be built under a prevailing wage scenario, and, and our budget reflects that. It always assumed that we would have, have public money. So there's, there's not a need to change that. And other than that, I think we're pretty much the same as we were before, with the exception of the addition of the McMahon Library. And, and I think, unless there are any questions, I think that kind of concludes where we are budget-wise.
Any questions for Dave?
Dunsey has her hand up.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me, Dave. I've been watching the market, and I'm talking about the building market. And there's been a constant influx or increase in, in materials, primarily lumber. I want to know, are you able to project, based on the rapid increase that's happening now, week over week over week, for the cost of supplies? Are you estimating or taking that into consideration to where you have a variable number to account for that? Because once this starts to, to take shape, I can only assume, based on where we are right now, that the cost of supplies will continue to increase. So is there a buffer in there to account for that variability, please, and thank you?
Yes, we have included in our estimate a calculation for escalation. I, based on all of the information that I have available to me, I do expect that the construction market materials are going to be volatile through the end of 2021. I'm not so sure that, once we get into 2022, that's still going to be the case. I believe there will be a correction in the marketplace. But, but to your point, yes, we have included escalation in these numbers.
Lois?
Is this the budget that would go to the council with the presentation on the 14th? And does it therefore include solar on both buildings?
If I could interrupt for a minute, I do think that I owe Dave a, an updated cost for bonding. And that hasn't been finalized yet. So we would be making an adjustment to the number based on information from our financial advisor. So there will be probably an adjustment in that cost. I'll let Dave answer the rest of it.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Nancy, for reminding me of that. Subject to the, to the bonding cost being modified, I think that this would be the budget that we would take to the council. And yes, it does include solar energy on both projects.
Thank you very much.
Mark?
Yeah, as I understand it, going forward, this process, we're going to, this committee is going to be meeting a week from tonight as well, our regular meeting. And Nancy, we will, we will have those updated legal bonding costs at that point incorporated into this. Is that the goal?
Yes.
So, so a week from tonight, the bottom line will be adjusted to, to include that. And so, that's in time to go to the finance committee the following Monday on the 21st. In other words, the council meeting this coming Monday, as I understand it, is to put the process in motion, not to present the final bottom line, but for the council to say, okay, please prepare the bottom line for us, for the finance committee, and for the next council meeting on the 28th.
Mark, if I can. Yes, that's correct, Mark.
Do we have any other hands up?
I don't see any.
Right. All right. And I would just add that Elizabeth will report up.
Oh, Lois has her hand up, sorry.
Maybe it's more.
You're muted, Lois. Lois, we missed you. You're muted.
There you go.
My question is, is, is the, are both buildings included in the grant application, or is it just one?
Right. We are going to, Elizabeth is going to. Right. We are going to, Elizabeth is going to report out on that, but in short, there will be two separate grant applications for one million dollars.
Thank you.
Uh, and twenty-twenty-one and the second will be in twenty-twenty-two. Right. Okay, uh, there are no other questions or comments. I'm going to go into the committee reports and outreach. Uh, Maxine is not on the call, but, uh, the outreach committee has not met, so I don't believe that there is a report. And Leah, do you have anything for the program?
Uh, no report, but I expect that we'll be meeting on Saturday.
Okay, great. And Mark, Construction Manager?
Uh, no report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
We're, yes, we're done.
I have a question with regards to, um, com- subcommittees reporting out. Uh, uh, the meeting two weeks ago, it was mentioned that, um, a report for space and planning was being created, Leah. And I asked, when could we expect that information? And you said two weeks? So I, I'm kind of interested in knowing what that looks like sooner than later. Do you have a, a new ETA to provide at this time?
Yeah, that was a just guestimation, but, uh, I should have one next week.
Okay, then, thank you.
Right. Uh, Elizabeth, the Director's Report.
Thank you, Greg. The Library Board met with the Wittenbury Historical Society to discuss the potential housing of Historical Society documents in the new build. That was discussed further at last night's Library Building Committee. And we're talking about a hundred and sixty potentially linear feet of material. Um, and that's in addition to the a hundred and fifty linear feet that the library currently has of historical documents. So we're going to continue to investigate that. The library is currently celebrating LGBTQ plus Pride Month and Caribbean American Heritage Month. Chris Grant connected the new Director of Harrison Libraries at the University of Hartford, Elizabeth Dill, with myself, um, earlier this week, and we look forward to a fruitful relationship between the two libraries. As of the beginning of June, we are now, uh, open two evenings a week, Wednesday nights and Thursday nights at both locations. And we are working on a strategic plan, um, to coincide with twenty-one to twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-five. And that is part of the requirement for moving forward with the construction grant application with the state. I also wanted to note that, um, our friends in Farmington recently had a successful referendum for their high school. Um, a hundred and thirty-six million dollar high school project, and, uh, we'll be watching that. And then finally, I wanted to note that, um, over the past couple of months, Greg received the Citizen of the Law Award from the Connecticut Bar Association. And I just thought that we should recognize it because his work here is reflected in why he won the re- award. And the Citizen of the Law Award is presented to a judge, attorney, or paralegal who has made a significant contribution to a charitable or public service cause that does not involve professional legal skills, but provides inspiration and contributes to the needy, the good of society, the environment, or our way of life. And I just wanted to recognize Greg and congratulate him on that. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Elizabeth and her report?
Yes, I do. Please and thank you. Elizabeth, when you talk about creating a strategic plan, is that something that had been done in partnership with the Burgers as well? Or is this something that the Board of Trustees is working on separate from, um, the Burgers?
This is separate from the Burgers. So this is something the library staff is working on in concert with the Library Board.
Okay. Elizabeth, can you walk through or give some explanation to the, uh, committee about the State Library Grant Process? Because I know that we talked a little bit about that and that came up with the Design Review Board. Uh, there was a question about the specifics related to that.
Yes, so we are hoping to submit the letter of intent to the State Library Board, um, by June thirtieth. Um, that was one of the documents that was included in today's agenda. Um, that is the first step of the grant process, um, the grant request process. There is a checklist of tasks related to construction grants that, that we then need to follow. Um, the majority of it is very basic, um, and to the point. Um, and we've already started making sure that we are going to be able to confidently move forward with that, um, application. Um, I wanted to note that, uh, currently there are several libraries, uh, in the state who are doing what we hope to do, and that is have one grant in one year and then followed by a million-dollar grant the next year. And those libraries include Bridgeport and Old Lime. Um, but many of our local, uh, friends, including Glastonbury, currently, uh, is doing a addition with one of the million-dollar grants from the State Library. We also have a timetable and guidelines, and I have a close working relationship with Maria Bernier from the State Library to ensure that that process is streamlined and done, uh, correctly.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir, Bob.
Uh, Elizabeth, the letter of intent that we, you know, was in the packet, uh, is this what, was this submitted on June fourth? This is a, is this the preliminary information they need or is there more to it?
That's it. That's the only thing they need by June thirtieth.
Okay, that's been submitted?
It has yet to be submitted.
Oh. Okay.
We are waiting for council approval before moving forward with that. The Library Board of Trustees has already approved it.
Bob, what I would ask and what I expect out of this meeting would be for the Library Building Committee to recommend, um, forwarding it to the Town Council for their, uh, consideration and approval. And assuming that is the case, it'll appear on the Town Council agenda on Monday fourteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the, the approval of the letter of intent to the Town Council.
Second. Second, Bob, back discussion. Michelle, I see your hand. I don't know if it's with respect to the letter. You're on mute.
Um, being that the intent and scope of the request for a grant has changed, the original discussion, however minimal it was at this table, was that the grant was going to be for Prosser Library. So now the grant is to be split between two buildings.
No.
No, no, there is.
So there would be one million-dollar grant for Prosser and one million-dollar grant for McMahon-Wittenberry.
Okay. I think that should be, that should be made clear. Um, what I would like to know is, being that there with regard to the application itself, I understand by, uh, listening to Elizabeth's content, uh, Elizabeth's comment who was involved, but this application was really not discussed at any length at this table. And I would like to know who discussed the matter, the principals of the persons who discussed it were, and whether there are meeting notes for that meeting, those meetings where you determined how the grants were going to be applied for.
Well, I guess I can speak to that. Um, it's common practice in Connecticut to apply for these grants if you're doing a building project. I don't think I know of any libraries that have not gone this route. So for me, I guess I just assumed that this would be part of the process.
But the library isn't getting it.
Doubt that my question was, uh, comment was that there has been no discussion about that process at the table here.
The, the letter of intent, for the most part, is a staff document, uh, something that the staff puts together, and it, the document is shared with the committee, uh, but that is not a library building committee. That's a staff-intensive, uh, document to fill out and process.
Well, I, 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 wait, wait. If I may, if I may ask my questions, I'd appreciate being able to ask them. Um, if, if that is the case, then I can understand that. However, whether or not the building committee was even interested in applying for these loans or these grants, sorry about that, was not discussed, and there was not a motion made to pursue it. That's my point. And I do have concerns about how we conduct business to make sure that any and all questions are able to be received and that a process is followed in doing so. My second question is that with regard to any costs that are running toward, um, being involved with applying for the grant as far as building cost is concerned. And it was interesting that it was brought up that prevailing wage has to be paid as a result of being a recipient. Are there any other costs that are built in that the state requires, um, an applicant to have in order to be considered for the grants? And if there are, I would like to see a side-by-side cost and how those costs would affect the overall price of the library, libraries, and/or whether or not not applying for the grant would place us on a lesser-cost financial footing. And then my next and last question is, um, if we don't get the grant, then is a potentially higher-cost building being proposed according to meeting and fulfilling grant requirements going to be built anyway? In, in that same manner, even if we are not getting a grant? Um, what, what I'm getting to here is what is the cost of getting the grant versus not taking the grant?
If I could answer about the prevailing wages.
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I would like to have those costs side by side so that we can justify the wisdom of doing this. Perhaps there is no difference, but I would like to know and see the figures to show that there isn't a difference. And if there is a difference, how large is it? Because then not discussing the issue becomes very important. So, um, just to review, I would be looking at who discussed the issue and how it was determined to, to do that, absent any discussion at the table. The side-by-side comparison of with a grant or not a grant, and what happens if we don't get the grant with regard to potential costs. So those are things that I would like to know. And I, I would like to, I would like to know them as soon as possible. If you have the information already, I don't think that's much of a problem. But being that we have dates set to receive this information, both from the standpoint of council and the Finance Committee, I think it's relevant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can answer the question about the prevailing wages and the process. This is a prevailing wage job with, with or without state grant money. There's a threshold for any project, municipal project in the state, um, over a certain amount. I think the threshold has, used to be four hundred thousand dollars for new construction. I think it might be a million dollars. So regardless if we get the grant or not, this is a prevailing wage job. Um, we did discuss this at previous meetings. I believe that they had also sent out a, um, a link to the, to everyone on the committee about the process and the state grant, and Elizabeth had reported out and I think had been assigned to be the, uh, point person on behalf of getting, um, the letter of intent. And I personally asked Elizabeth for the letter of intent so that I could shepherd, um, the, it through the Town Council because the Town Manager has tasked me with, um, overseeing both this and another potential bond process, bond project, um, and getting all the appropriate paperwork to them. So I hope that answers your questions with regard to the, um, the process as well as prevailing wages. I, I, I'm not sure what the, I think if someone else can clarify, but I think the project cost is what the project cost is, um, what Downs has presented us and does not incorporate the receipt or the elimination of any, um, any particular grant, either the state construction grant or anything else that the town may receive, um, for these projects.
Well, I would just, thank you, thank you for the response, Nancy, but I would also like to have included in the record that, uh, very early on, I asked for a copy of the requirements, and you did respond to me and tell me they weren't available, and then three months later, I asked you for them again. And that's when they became available to us. So I have time concerns. I have time concerns about the ability, uh, to digest all of that material over a three-month period. And then we are on a timeframe now. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
My question, um, real quickly goes back to, um, where's Leah? The strategic plan that you're doing for the library, conducting for the library. Will you weave in any of the plans that are being made here, um, as it relates to the new building? Um, is anyone from this committee sitting in that planning process with you? Will anyone from this committee?
That was actually Elizabeth.
I mean, Elizabeth, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Um, goal number two of the strategic plan is a library for everyone. And one of the bullet points for that, well, it's goal number two, a library for everyone, focused on excellence across the three locations, serving all ages, with one of the bullet points being modernizing library facilities to be ADA compliant and responsive to community needs.
And Christine, I, I believe, uh, Leah, Ava, and Maxine are serving on that, uh, committee.
Okay, good. So again, you know, information from this end will be shared. Okay, thank you.
We are also. I wanted to say that the notice of intent at the top reads, "Fill this out as best you can. This is just for preliminary information gathering and is not a commitment."
Uh, Ava?
Yeah, I would just mention a couple of things. All of the requirements and all of the information for the state grant application process, for everything involved with it, is and has been online at all times. And I believe we received that link from Nancy quite a while ago. Um, discussion has taken place with the Board of Trustees, which is important since we actually have statutory authority that we share with the town regarding the library and its operations. Since there is no commitment involved in submitting a letter of intent, or more technically, the notice of intent, then it did not seem to be an issue since the committee can decide that they really don't want the two million dollars involved, should they so choose. It was made clear from the materials and in discussions with Elizabeth that, um, really the only issue is one that has been discussed multiple times on this committee when Lois has mentioned the lead silver requirement. And Mark and others have already discussed the idea that we would certainly be watching those expenditures. If the lead requirement became more expensive than the grant, then that's a separate issue for the committee to discuss whether or not it should be met. I would also mention that this letter of intent has at all times in the life of this committee been on the timeline that TSKP has presented to us every time they've spoken. So I, I really don't see this as a surprise. I'd also mention that the strategic plan is the plan for the library. It's something that is a policy issue of the library. It's independent of this grant application process. There was no strategic plan in place when Elizabeth came. Due to COVID, the discussion Due to COVID, the discussion has been delayed. But that is a discussion between the board, which sets policy and the director who influences that policy and carries it out for the town of Bloomfield. So those conversations are taking place in board of trustee meetings and at the library. They are not actually a function of this committee. And, um, certainly a strategic plan will be available to the committee to submit, should the committee decide to apply for the grant. But the strategic plan will be written and will be confirmed by both the board of trustees, the staff and the library director. Whether or not that grant application is submitted. Thanks.
Thank you. Bob Ike?
Mr. Chairman, just from a procedural standpoint, in my years of on the Bloomfield Board of Education, I thank you Nancy for clarifying that when Downs presented that budget, it doesn't include the grant. If one, from my understanding, these grants only help to reduce the costs to the taxpayers if we're able to get funds from the outside. And my last question is, who would approve the grant if we, if, who makes the decision to move ahead with submitting the application? I know on the board, before they submit, so oftentimes when they do have grants, they have to be approved by the Board of Education. Will the town council be approving this? Will the library committee or will the trustee board?
That is.
I believe it's the mayor.
Council.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Uh, Bob Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I remember when I, when I joined this board in November, where the first items on the agenda was the library gap grant. Lois Hager brought it up at that point. And we discussed it and we said, yes, it's worth going for. Uh, whether we actually get it or not was a separate issue. The one thing that we were all clear on was if required silver leads, we said we want to do that silver leads anyway. Uh, so the grant was, the idea of the grant was totally irrelevant to direction and the cost that we were going to be doing for building this building. Any grant money we get in, of course, we, as Bob Ike said, will reduce, but the local taxpayers have to pay out of a bond issue because that just means we can, even though we may authorize the bond X amount, we now bond X minus 2 million or X minus something. Uh, in reality, uh, it is, as Lois brought forward at the time, if my memory serves me correct, that, uh, there actually were no additional costs. Other than the leads, silver requirement, which as I said, we had decided we were going to do anyway. So I, I think that may answer some of your questions, Michelle. Thank you.
Lois?
That was my memory also, Bob. Um, my, my other memory of it is I went through that application very, very carefully because I was concerned about us getting all the pieces together according to the timeframe that the grant requires. Um, and, and the public outreach has got many, many pieces to it. Um, but the other thing that I remember was the, um, confidence that people had that if we did get the grant, it would cover the cost of lead. Even though we're planning to do lead anyway, the million dollars would cover any incremental costs and there'd probably be a um, residue from that that would help, uh, the project in general. So I'm not concerned about this at all. I think we have thought about it from the very beginning. And, and I'm pretty sure that I forwarded that grant information to at least some of you, um, because Leah had asked me to take the lead on lead.
Thank you. And I would just add that the information from the state allowing us to submit two grant applications was a bonus. Initially, we had, uh, been under the impression that we would have one grant application for a million dollars. And the state notified us that we would be eligible, uh, for two separate $1 million grants. So I think it's a, a win-win. A huge win, uh, for the taxpayers of the town. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, whose hand is up. No? You're muted, Michelle. I don't.
I don't know why the indicator is still there. I did not put my hand up.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, uh, Budanzi?
So I, I have concerns and, and this, this is a problem that I've mentioned before. But I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very clear about it now because maybe I wasn't before. I, I feel as though because these ad hoc committees are really ran by either board of trustees of the library or the director of the library, it's kind of like a conflict of interest. I don't recall seeing this. I'm gonna dig through all of the information I've received thus far to look for this again. But I feel as though Ava is saying two things, okay? And that is, okay, we're gonna use the library building committee to get this grant because this is how it's gonna be done. But at the same time, the library board of trustees, uh, and the staff of the library are, are really in control of it. And, and that's been my problem with the lack of, of having access to the Google Docs. I mean, I, I really think that this is continuing to present itself as a problem. And I think it's a conflict of interest. When board of, when people that are a part of the library board of trustees are directors or active members and controlling members of these ad hoc committees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Ava, one last comment, then we're going to vote on the motion.
Let me make this plain. The board of trustees members were appointed by the mayor to serve as ad hoc members of this committee. We do the work, although we do not get to vote. If someone else would like to do the work, perhaps they would like to show up at the meetings and help. We do not control in any way the submission of the grant by this committee. We are, however, required statutorily to approve it as part of the municipal authority governing the library. We will not submit the grant and we do not write the grant. We are, however, required to approve its submission by the library. I would also like to add that I am more than a little tired of being insulted. We are working. We are adding our expertise, which is considerable, whether that's accepted or not. We have enormous amounts of experience in this field and we have offered to bring them to this committee and add to this process. I would suggest that anyone who has a concern come to the meetings. Certainly we are up at eight o'clock Saturday's meeting and then meeting again for second subcommittees. Everyone has been invited. Some people have accepted the conversation as positive and have attended the meetings. And they have helped with the process and been integral to it. Anyone who doesn't do that has decided that they do not want to be part of that conversation. We don't control that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ava. Uh, Nancy, I'm going to ask you to read the motion. I, I thought it was Bob who made the motion, but I.
It was Bob Berman that made the motion and Bob Ike seconded it. And it was, uh, they made a motion to approve sending the letter of intent, the notice of intent to the town council for approval.
All votes in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Stain.
Okay. Thank you. The motion carries. Um, Nancy, I'm going to turn it over to you for approval of invoices.
The first one is, uh, the final invoice from Library Development Solutions, the Burgers. And it's, um, invoice BPL Space Planning Number Two for $3,500.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the invoice? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. And Nancy, there is a second invoice, I believe.
Yes, there is one to, um, TSKP Studio. It's invoice number five for $5,000.
So moved.
Hi, Ken.
Mr. Chair?
Discussion, yes, Mark.
Um, strictly speaking, um, there are a few more tasks for TSKP to, uh, to do, um, mainly attend meetings, I believe. Uh, you know, some modest presentations, attending a few meetings until all their services are done. Um, and I'd like to see the generally amendment that we approve, um, 4,000 of the 5,000 requested.
That, uh, motion amendment, uh, accepted?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, discussion on the amended motion to approve $4,000 out of the 5,000 final invoice from TSKP.
Yep. I, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Nancy, how come the, uh, oh, we don't, we have, still have outstanding invoice from May 1st?
Uh, the previous, I'm sorry, what's your question?
It says, it says still outstanding invoice number four.
I believe invoice number four was processed maybe two weeks ago. There may be some, some cross, something crossed, but I will look into that. And if it hasn't been, then I'll make sure that, that it, if it's been approved by the committee, that it's been processed.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm in total agreement of, uh, paying 4,000 of that and Mark would agree that remaining for, uh, TSKP to provide. And I think this is just a cleaner way of doing it and, uh, there are no other comments. I'm ready to take this to a vote. Any other final comments or questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, next meeting is, uh, next Wednesday, June 16th, and we'll also meet on June 30. Uh, as was previously indicated, we will, uh, meet with council on this coming Monday. And we are now going to go into comments from committee. Any comments from the committee? Lois, I see your hand.
It's just a question. Are we going to continue meeting on Zoom through the summer?
You know, that, uh, question was raised at our last meeting and I think we should probably, uh, take a few minutes to have, uh, a conversation about that, um, and find out from the town what the requirements are for in-person meetings. Um, but.
I would be very grateful if it could continue.
And you?
Through the summer.
Zoom?
Mm-hmm.
Zoom only or hybrid or would?
Hybrid is fine. I, I would just like to be able to participate when I'm not in Bloomfield.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Bob?
I can tell you, if I could comment, there is a bill that is currently pending before the state legislature. It's been approved by the House, but it is pending approval from the Senate. And beginning July 1st, municipalities will have the option to meet in person, Zoom only, or electronic only, or a hybrid. Um, so they, it's authorized under the law going forward, assuming that it gets approved. Um, there are some posting requirements that, um, would kick in in the event that there is a, um, a partial or in, um, in total electronic meeting. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. The town council did discuss last, just past week, um, the possibility of doing hybrid meetings. Um, and there would be some equipment that they would have to purchase that hasn't been done yet. But, um, I, so I just wanted to give you the update. How you want to meet could probably be up to you. But, um, it is authorized under the laws we go forward.
Thank you. Bob Ike? You're muted, Bob.
I just wanted to second Lois that hopefully we can stay hybrid. Not only through the summer, but through the, through the next five or six years as to we actually get the building, the grand opening. It's, it's so much better, uh, just for me. This is my own personal opinion. Uh, hybrid is better. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the committee before we go to the public? Uh, I just want to take a moment, uh, to do what, um, I neglected to do at the beginning is to thank everyone for their time and contributions to this project. Uh, despite, uh, any misgivings or misconceptions, I want everyone on this committee to know that they're greatly and gravely appreciated all your work and dedication, uh, whether you are ad hoc or voting member. Uh, I appreciate all that you do, uh, for this project and for the town. Uh, no one should feel slighted with respect to the contributions being made. And I do agree that all of our meetings are open, uh, to everyone on the committee as well as members of the public to the extent that they want to, uh, participate. And, um, finally, I, I just want to say that the opportunity for the town to receive $2 million from the state for this library project, in my mind, and in my opinion, is a no-brainer and how any, excuse me, let me just settle back. That is a great win for the town. And for folks who are concerned about the impact of taxpayers, uh, what it will do to our budget. I can't believe we're arguing about whether or not we should be applying for $2 million from the state of Connecticut for a, a library project. I can tell you on some of the other library projects I've worked on, particularly in Hartford, getting that money from the state, people are excited and jumping up and down. And there's never any question about why are we doing this? Not free money, but it, it's money that will not impact, uh, residents of Bloomfield. And I just think that, uh, I want to thank Elizabeth for her diligence and her communication with the state library folks. Uh, making sure that we're in line to get these two individual $1 million grants. It's, it's great. And it's going to make a bit, uh, a difference to the bottom line. So thank you, Elizabeth, and your team for doing that. And, and again, I would just close my comments by saying that thank you all for your contributions to this process because it means a lot. Uh, Nancy, we have any, uh, public comments?
Yes, we do. Um, the first one is Gail Riley. Okay, Gail, unmute yourself and go ahead.
Yeah, um, I want to thank everybody for all the work that they've been doing, um, for the library. Um, I just do feel that the public's comments really haven't been listened to with regards to the design of the library, of the Prosser Library. Um, and I just hope moving forward, um, the building committee and, and, and the, the developer, the architects, um, do try to incorporate what the townspeople are asking for and not make it this modern glass building that doesn't really fit into the New England, um, town of Bloomfield that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next we have Stan Casperson. Go ahead, Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a number of small items. I appreciate your time. Uh, first item with respect to, uh, TSKP's next renderings Friday for the council meeting. I believe it's necessary at this point in time to show viewpoints from the north, from the south, from the west, from the east, from the town green. All of the comments that you've been getting are based on one view. It doesn't show Tungus Avenue very well, Mountain Avenue, et cetera, et cetera. Ask your contractor for 3D renderings from all, on all four sides. Secondly, TSKP should take notice, I believe, that the property immediately north of the Prosser Library is being refaced with traditional New England brick. Brick is a common word in these conversations. There's more of it coming. Third, TSKP identified louvers on the glass of the Prosser Library, vertical louvers. My question is, are those on the inside? Are those on the outside? Do they move? Are they going to be a, a maintenance issue? McMahon, I was going to say, are there louvers? You've answered that question with a fancy glass. Uh, a new item for people to think about and at least be able to talk about if somebody asks you what happened. There's a new building site at the corner of Cottage Grove and Prospect. Instead of a mega gas station, there's an absolutely perfect level building site near the center of town. This committee may not even want to consider it, but the committee members ought to be. but the committee members ought to be able to say when somebody asks, oh, yeah, we did know about it, but, and you can fill in the but. I'm still waiting, uh, moving on. I'm still hoping to get feedback on why the cost of the new Prosser Library is so much more expensive. Anyway, you look at it, and the recently completed Human Services Building, Chairman Davis indicated that there would be something coming. I hope that's true. Lastly, on the cost issue, committee members, everybody, ad hoc and formal. When members of the public may ask you, why is this library so expensive? You, I believe, need to have an answer. The rate payer, the taxpayers, the voters want to know that the committee knows and accepts and understands why this is a nearly $30 million project. And the last $2 million, I'm jumping up and down, Greg. Absolutely. Go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other comments?
Okay, great. Uh, hearing none, I will.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. There is one more. There's Todd, Todd Cooper. Sorry, Todd. Go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everyone. Todd Cooper, Tumaluchi Ridge, Bullville, Connecticut, also a uh, Town of Bloomfield Library Board Trustee. Um, you know, I, I simply wanted to, first of all, I'm going to agree with Mr. Casperson on one of his points, um, that would love to see more renderings of the building from different perspectives. Um, I think that would lend to making uh, decisions not only um, for townspeople, but for the Library Board uh, Building Committee itself, um, much easier. Um, second, and, and lastly, I do want to comment on some of the, um, the discussions I've heard um, about uh, decisions um, that are made by the various committees. And uh, you know, I want to congratulate everyone who works on these committees. This is very hard work. Uh, those who have volunteered, those who have been appointed um, to their various positions. And certainly, I wanted to mostly assure people that just as there's very robust discussion um, for and against, and the pros and cons of things that go into the decisions that are made, I as a citizen and taxpayer of the town of Bloomfield bring whatever points I can that I think the average citizen would bring up to the uh, Library Board of Trustees meetings. Um, our chair, who is experienced and knowledgeable and has been in this position for quite some time, is very receptive, very open, and has the uh, the ability to take all of our viewpoints along with the Library Director, and we um, are able to round them up and do what is absolutely best. So it is not that there is a hidden agenda, but more the agenda is hashed out so that all sides are taken, all sides are given a fair viewpoint, and we serve at the uh, we serve in our positions, um, at the pleasure of the citizens and the mayor of the town of Bloomfield, but we bring to it, you know, our different viewpoints. So it's not like there is a, a hidden agenda coming out. We, we do it. We're all volunteers. And to think and expect that anything else other than a fair uh, and balanced uh, discussion and decisions would come out of it. Um, it was, is to think that way is disingenuous, but um, I, I assure you that everyone there works very hard. Um, our uh, Board Chair is, is, has all of the character and qualities that you would expect in a leader. And you know, we appreciate her. I certainly appreciate her. I appreciate every board member. And anything that you hear or that comes out of that board is a consensus. We're together. But it has been worked out. It has been hashed out. And what we bring to the table is a discussion that has the town of Bloomfield and its citizens first and foremost in mind. Uh, I just wanted to, to add that and, and know that what you're getting uh, is going to be the best that we believe that we can offer to everyone. Uh, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, I think that's it now.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, okay, folks, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, good night. Thank you all for hanging in there. And again, thank everyone for their hard work and efforts, and uh, we will see you next Wednesday.